I would like to call me for the select one's August 7th meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We do have a forum and we'll begin with. If at any time there is a conflict of interest, please disclose it. Any adjustments to the agenda, Joe? Review and approve the meeting minutes of July 17th, 2023. Motion by Jim Janassi.
Second.
Second by Wendy. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Those abstaining. Or for abstaining. I want to speak on a non-agenda item. Boards and committees, we've been given copies of ordinance, airport and per commission boards and committee meeting minutes. I would like to thank the boards and committees for submitting those to us and I would ask. If in the future this board can get a quarterly report from all boards and committees, they are in fact fingers of the board of selectmen and I think it's imperative that we be aware what's going on at all levels. So if we could ask the chairman of each of those boards to offer us, I prefer an in-person, I understand sometimes that may be difficult, but. If we could get updates, quarterly updates from what's going on with all the rest of our boards.
I'll be giving part commissions.
Perfect. And I'll be here for the ordinance committee.
There you go, Shane.
Perfect. Is anybody opposed to that? Do you feel like it's a fair, now it should happen, perfect test for so much? Alright, let's move into consent items. First on the list, liquor license renewed for Lundy Lodge. Motion by Mr. Janassi. Second by Sam. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. On to called mountain camps.
Let's approve the liquor license for, I say ball mountain camp, but it's also listed as silverware enterprises.
So much. That is a motion by Mr. Janassi. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Northwoods gravel grind, I will say. You were trying to. And I'm just gonna say that because of the pending certificate of liability, which I don't believe we have received as of right now, if somebody's motion could please include that language, I would appreciate it.
So moved.
Nasty second, Mr. Shaver. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Alright, moving into appointments. We have a comprehensive plan review and implementation committee. Interested party, Mr. Steve Hewens.
Motion to approve the appointment of Steve Hewens for the comprehensive plan committee.
Second.
Motion by Jimmy, second by Wendy. Any further discussion? Do we need to put the terms in the motions? I know I said at one of the previous meetings, we didn't need to because the paperwork identifies it.
It's best practice to have a chair that's available to.
Okay.
Would I amend my motion? Or? Is it just for a year or?
Six thirty twenty twenty six.
Top rate.
Top rate of your sheet.
I'm just looking right at it. To include determined in six thirty twenty twenty six.
Perfect. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Oh, park commission resignation.
Chairman, motion to accept the renovation from the park commission by Cash J Haley.
Motion by Ethan. Second by Jimmy. I do just wanna say thank you so much, Cash. I know it's difficult to be a local business owner and try and maintain some of the schedules for these boards and committees, so thank you so much for your time. Sorry to see you go. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
A quick question.
Yeah.
We just gotta write out the rest of the year, the election next year, fill the spot.
Um, I believe there is language that says it can be filled by an appointment of this board, so if somebody wants it before then, please shove them this way.
You got it.
I believe, Joe, if you could find that out.
I believe you're correct.
I think that's how it works, but let me know if I'm wrong. How's that? If I'm right, we'll let it ride. Alright, transfer station reserve.
Motion to. Prove up to eight thousand dollars from the reserve transfer station. Raid and hand pay pass.
Motion by Jim, second, second by Sam. I did just wanna make a quick comment that this was in the capital plan last year, so the funds within the reserve monies is there. As the reserves fund the capital plans, so it is there. I just, I asked that question because I was curious how it was going to impact with the plan and the reserve monies.
Get a quick question. Was Pike the only bid that we got, they were company contacted?
They were, yes. They've done most of our payment. Their price is pretty competitive.
Did I ask for a vote? Probably not. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Main DOT local road assistance program or LARCA funds. Town manager is looking for authorization to sign. The assistance program. Did you want to give any feedback as to what this program is about, just to?
Sure, Madam Chair. So this is, comes from a pool of funds that the state distributes amongst municipalities each year. It's based on the amount of revenue they receive, so it goes up and down annually. Last year. We received thirty one thousand seven twenty four, this year it's thirty six, thirty two. And it has to be used for capital project. Last year we spent one point six seven million dollars on Blue Lake, we just plugged that number in there. They're basically just looking for evidence that we spent this amount of money or more on capital projects in the town. So what I'm going to plug into this is one of the road bond payments. Because that was what we did last year for capital improvement, which we've been doing for several more years, we've been making those payments. So I'm gonna plug that number into the, into the document, sign it and send it back.
Any questions from the board?
Joe, tell manager to sign the letter of endot from the local road assistance program.
Motion by Jim, second from Sam. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Housing service provider grant letter of support. Town manager is looking for authorization to sign.
Make a motion to authorize town manager to sign a letter of support. So that AVCO can receive their grant funding.
Motion by Wendy. Second by Ethan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. E nine one one addressing road name.
Make motion to approve the E nine one one addressing road name, Mac Drive, Joe Haley.
Motion by Jim, second, second by Wendy. I did verify that this road does serve two or more properties as is stated in the ordinance that it must. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Waste water treatment facility, truck lease to purchase. So this is a new sewer truck that twenty thousand dollars is a budgeted amount for this year. I understand by the language provided that it is leased to own, which means we intend to purchase it at the end of the lease. What is the terms of the lease?
So it's typically a three-year lease, one year, one dollar buyout at the end. Those are the typical terms. I do not have. Rates, I was hoping to get them this afternoon, so it's a board preference on whether you want to give me the blanket authority or if we would like to put back rates in a more defined lease, lease program, I'm happy to have.
What's the advantage of buying it out?
Bear with me just one second, please. No, it's okay, just the board has, if they have any questions first, honey, and then I promise I'll recognize you. Did the board have any questions?
It's budgeted, I mean, it's in the cycle. Purchases and everything.
Right, so it is correctly in the com, in the capital plan for this department?
Yes, it is.
Perfect. And I did have a question about gross capitalized costs because it's a lease versus a purchase, but we don't have that. It sounds like we just don't have that yet.
Correct, it's not in yet.
Okay. What was your question, dear?
Basically the same. What's the advantage of buying this because of the repairs versus leasing it where the town usually under the law wants?
That's a good point. One of the advantages is, you know, if you lease it and it turns out to be something that, you know. Doesn't really work out, it's got some remnants, remnants, and, you know, you can turn it back in. Typically warranties will cover that too, typically. So there's, they don't always though, you know, depending on what it is. The biggest advantage that I see in leasing vehicles like this is you have. A known quantity each year for a fixed duration, so instead of having to come up with a whole fifty thousand dollars in one year, it's come up with sixteen or three, that's whatever it is. Twenty's a little high probably than first payment will be, it'll probably be sixteen, seventeen thousand in three years. When we're budgeting, we want to be safe for first one.
So what I'm asking, why would we continue the lease versus purchase? Because am I reading, am I listening to this question correct, that at the end of three years you're wanting to purchase this? So then all the maintenance falls on the town at that point?
Correct.
Versus if we keep it under a lease, it's under a warranty, so if you lease this one for three years and then did a new lease and a new lease, you don't have those extra costs, correct?
But you do essentially have the cost in the lease, because that's why I was curious about the gross capitalized costs, because there is a cost to the lease as well versus the cost to an outright purchase, so you have to consider both sides of that, which is why I asked about the. The true cost of the lease, because that's imperative to know.
Correct. The advantage and. Sorry, what you? What Linda's saying is. That we're always dealing with a new vehicle, which, which I prefer to do, especially since we haven't been able to. Hire a full-time town mechanic in a while. I, I would prefer to have new vehicles each time if, if it's possible that we were dealing with new equipment and that no, no one's in a garage trying to fix something, well, there's other things to be done because we don't have a person dedicated to that position.
As we all know, once it falls out of lease, the.
You know, then your money, it's the difference between owning and leasing, it's just always the battle.
Yeah.
Well, a one dollar buyout is a good program versus, you know.
Yes.
Because sometimes it can turn you upside down. What does the one dollar buyout mean?
That the title is transferred at that point, the town takes ownership of it.
So there is no extra fee after that point? So at the end of three years, you own it?
And the payments have been spread out over those three years, which, you know. Said kind of evens it, evens it out, you know, it's been fifty or sixty in one year and not spending anything.
How many trucks does this department have?
Two. So there would be one that would be traded or sold on, I mean, this did. Yeah, so this lease price, whichever lease price, if we choose one, will be affected by the, by the trade. So the payment will be.
Alright, folks, what's your pleasure?
Do you wanna wait for more interest rates and the rest of the information?
I would like to if we have time.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'd just like to know.
You wanna motion to table?
Yeah, that would be fantastic, please.
Make a motion to table, we've got a treatment facility truck lease to purchase.
Motion by Jim, second by Sam. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Annual election, Vice President and Executive Committee. So I wanna give us the rundown.
Sure, Madam Chair, there are. Three for executive committee and then one person running for the vice president. One is for the executive committee, folks, and kind of oversee the policy and budget of everything, which is. And there were three folks running, three people, three votes you can cast, so if you wish to vote for these folks, just make a motion to do that, Tracy and I will fill them out, send them in. And the candidates are, I'll read them aloud, Melissa Dohier. Big time state town manager Bradley, child of a friend here from Jay, Nathan, Anthony Rudy, town manager Ray, Diana Walker, so a person down as well. Wish Melissa's running for the. And the vice president.
Is there any budget of order to vote for the candidates as slated?
I would say just move, so move, so I don't have to.
Motion by Jim. Second, second by Wendy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Human resource consultant contract. So can I ask you to please explain what the difference is between this one, there's currently two active contracts with this individual?
Correct, Madam Chair, there were two active contracts. One lapsed June thirty, or ended June thirty. And that was the standard one, the one that is basically essentially the same as the one that is in your package. There was a second one that was instituted or put into place by the board. Last September or October, I think, or October, to work specifically on the administrative unit of the. The union that we were with at the time. So that is concluded. There still are two months left of that. With the balance of those two months, I've spoken with the. We wanna hit the personnel policy. We've been talking about that for a while, but never, we never really got to where we're finished last, so. That's still in place, it expires in October, but with the balance of that, we'd like to work on personnel policy, make some progress on that. In the meantime. And that one, that one will expire in October, it won't continue past that. In the meantime, we have this one. The standard recurring. Contract that covers most of our normal human negotiation items and human resources stuff at M L A. General consultations, all those things. I think it's a good idea to refresh this, go back to July one, moving forward to June thirty, because we have our one collective fire name agreement. Expires June thirty of next year, we'll be getting started on that probably in the next month or two, three. So I think it makes sense to have this one in place.
Perfect, thank you for that history, Joe. I just wanted to make sure all board members were aware of their current, well, there will be two, once we approve this, but this is for annual one, the other one will expire and will not be renewed. So entertain a motion.
Yes. Twelve thousand dollars for an annual policy, do you, do you get any benefit outside of just union contract negotiations? When you said like a personnel call, a policy or a handbook or something like that, do they generate anything for the general use? Outside of just unionized employees?
Yes.
So you do get a little bit of. Yeah, we got personal policies, job descriptions, basic H R maintenance.
I will add a caveat that there is a ratio of how in all hopes the negotiations are, you know, compared to the other items that we managed to get done. So if it's a heavy negotiating year, that, that takes up kind of the bulk of the available time. And there's no, there aren't hours allotted to it, she's typically pretty generous with that, it takes what it takes, it's. But yes, there are other deliverables, job descriptions, we've got a lot of those in place. Consulting on.
Review process.
Review process, training, certain trainings she helps with, like sexual harassment.
Certain.
Yeah, some of the mandatorys. Those types, yeah. There's sometimes, you know, some help with discipline issues where they, they're rare, but they.
Thank you.
Make a motion to sign the contract for human resource consultant. To July first, twenty twenty three.
Motion by Jim, second by Sam. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Doesn't look like we have any correspondence. Moving on to old business board bylaws, second reading. We'll let you know, per the policy we appear to be following for the bylaws, we seem to be following the policy adoption process, so given that this is the second reading, it can be moved on this evening. If that is the direction everybody would like to take, if there needs to be more amendments, please don't hesitate to say so.
Madam Chair, I had one thought, and it's on page five, under section nineteen, item number one in the newly added text. Instead of reading after recognition of the chair.
Should be by?
Yes.
I have the exact same note. Thank you for pointing that out. Any other additions? Anybody feeling pretty good with the document? I like it. I've entertained a motion to adopt them.
Motion to approve the select board bylaws as written, the one edit.
Second. Motion by Wendy, second by Ethan. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay. Bob Carlton, High Peaks National Wildlife Refugee Letter of Opposition. So if everyone has read. The information from our town manager, he's making what I think is a very sound. Recommendation, but that's just my singular opinion. You don't know that we want to take a political stand on this without having a lot of the information. There seems to be a whole lot of missing. Details, there's no actual plan written yet, there's no, and since this doesn't seem to be time sensitive at this point because the discussion and the plan has been pushed out, correct?
Six months.
Yeah, okay. So since we seem to have plenty of time, I would like to, I think we need to have a quarterly meeting anyway. There's a whole new makeup of us and I'd like to get everybody all together so we can have some discussions that are long overdue, and I think this could be a topic that we should. Have a conversation with the surrounding implementations. Again, my singular opinion, please let me know if anybody thinks something else.
I agree, I think it definitely needs a lot more information.
A little more detail.
And it's in the news right now too. I mean, there's just an article written about this and on face value, it looks like a good idea, but when you drill down, I'm not sure, it's good, it's good dead local control.
Alright, perfect. So, Joe, I'm not sure how you want to under, I assume under, wait minute, where's calendar? Oh, there it is, never mind, I found it. Under the calendar if we wanna talk that quarterly meeting. I think for now, we'll just kind of let this sit. We don't know that we need to table it at this point.
No, if you talk about making a.
We can just revisit at a different.
You're talking about scheduling a meeting with the plant patients.
Perfect. Alright, folks, we'll move on to. P fast testing. Quick face value, it looks like we're in good shape, the surrounding properties that were tested, am I correct? Did anyone have any questions? Yes.
All in the bylaws here, Cindy Eaton, fourteen ounce dry. So, so Joe, does, Madam Chair, does this mean that the, the next step is, is to look back into septic sludge spreading?
Joe.
Madam Chair, no, the answer to that question at this point is no. The report that you're looking at tonight has to do with properties adjacent to and on the airport property and then parts of the. Testing area where at the sewer plant. We also do. More rigorous testing at the plant, or we have, have done the last year with the D E P, and those are all seem to be for most fire below thresholds. So. I don't think that this, with that being said, I don't think that there's any movement at the state level to reinstitute land spreading, that's what the D E P has consistently been saying from last year.
Thank you, Cindy, for that question. Alright, folks, now. Do I even have to say it out loud? There's documents in your package, just review it. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. It's the S T R, the S T Rs in the Lupeck Service Area Report, it's a report from the Land Use Planning Commission regarding short-term rentals in their service area. It is available to public at request. I'm so sorry. We will move on from that unless anybody wants to make comments. Okay. New business, November town meeting timeline. This document, I understand that this document was provided in the event that we think we need to move a couple of items to a November town meeting. I am of the mindset that I don't see that either of those are in dire need of being moved to November one. I hate the additional cost of a special town meeting, and I also hate the, the additional burden on the town clerk for a special town meeting, which I know is the previous. It's a little tough to try and pull off one-on-one, so if there's no. Is there a statement this November? My goodness, I can't believe I just asked that question out loud. There we go.
I don't know what the question is.
I know, and there, my other concern is that I, I worry about special town meetings for town business, because everybody's so used to it being conducted in June, that you don't get, you don't get the turnout that you would get at the annual. So I just, my opinion is I don't think special town meeting is necessary, but if anybody else feels otherwise, please chime in.
Madam Chair, do we have any warrants that were submitted to the town?
Not at this time. I think this is kind of the, the outline, if we wanted. Uh, I think this is kind of the, the outline if we wanted to put those two ordinances on a warrant for, for vote, and it was just the two at this time, right?
So those.
The sign one is never going to be ready for November.
It would be a very aggressive.
Yeah.
But, but part of the, part of the reason I wanted to kind of bring your attention was, was for that purpose, you know, the housekeeping elements. I know that signs have been something that, you know, elected folks have wanted to kind of clean up. It probably makes sense that that would go to June. Uh, the other thing that's, uh, that's worth mentioning is the solar moratorium will expire six months from July one, so it's January one. I think it's clear to us now, we're probably not going to have the alternative energy ordinance ready for November. I think that was kind of the original thought process of possibly having a November town meeting. But just want to talk about that review. It's probably not going to make it. It is being worked on by the ordinance committee currently. And, uh, from the Secretary of the Ordnance Committee, I, I have got a report that probably is not, it's definitely not going to be ready till November. So, uh, I think it's just important to talk about the timing of those things. You can hold a hearing prior to the expiration of the moratorium and extend that from your bench, uh, as long as you have a hearing. So the moratorium, yes. That gives you until June to complete that, and then you can put it on the town meeting warrant. The only other thing that just probably is worth discussing, and I don't think it's a big deal, but you might have a stack of ordinances on that town meeting, uh, warrant, but the other side of that is folks will have thirty days or more, give it a absentee ballot, you know, take it home if they want to. So there'll be a lot of literature to think about, but they'll have time if they want to contemplate it prior to coming to the polls. So it looks like June for all.
I am of that mindset. And does anyone else feel otherwise?
No, I agree. I just want to be mindful of these ordinances, knowing that, that they're going to be voted on in the June meeting. We continue to work on what we can, that we, we're not running around during the winter season.
Absolutely. My understanding of the two, though, that are potentially being slated for November is they're sitting with the attorneys already. They've gone through everything right up to the attorneys.
More, I mentioned, warning is complete. That's ready. I can bring that to a meeting if you can say, send us to the next town meeting and bring this down.
Okay.
The cemetery ordinance is being reviewed by legal. I don't, I don't expect a lot of changes to that, but.
So they are well within, just so you know, those two were well within the process.
Yeah. As a whole, as far as ordinances go.
That other one in the assignment is going to take a little bit more. Okay, okay. LD one oh one, the information return of excess funds from the sale of tax-acquired property was included for information purposes. I will make one comment, and I find it funny that everything tells us we must, 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 but the law reads may. Like, wait a minute. Just my, you know. Sense. Okay. Who's stakeholder group? That was just information provided by Joe. Something needed to ask you to participate in, correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair. It's minimal time commitment. The legislature has asked the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife to conduct a study. Direct, the, the resolve was directing the department of life to examine issues related to recent seasons. And in that, they define what stakeholders would be, Senate member, House member, et cetera. And then down towards, uh, somewhere it says representative of municipal, this was unsolicited. They reached out to, to me and asked if I would do it myself. Like, I would like to help. I just wanted you to be aware of it. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Me, Department of inland Fisheries and Wildlife Land Acquisition. We've been provided with information that a deer wintering area has been protected in Rangelay. The information was in our packet. It indicates that a seven hundred and eight acre property in very close proximity to your woodland in Rangelay. Do we have a location?
It busts the backside of the waste water.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about it? It was basically for information purposes only, right, Joe?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, Park Commission, Town Park Rules and Regulations, first reading. So the Park Commission has forwarded a draft to us of their proposed Town of Rangelay Town Park Rules and Regulations. It doesn't look like there's a whole lot of changes from the original document. A few language corrections. Yeah, some date changes, maybe language correction, formatting.
Couple of things I could point out.
Absolutely.
In the, in the second reading, the Fire Commission talked about putting a time limit on the interior slips of the, uh, BODOC. Two hours. Previously, it was kind of vague on.
Yeah.
Uh, and then of course, the other side of that is putting the boats in and out exclusively. And then on the first page in yellow, uh, this was kind of ambiguous previous to the Fire Commission reviewing this. Uh, if you look at the ordinance, which is, uh, the very top, uh, it says governing the use of town parks forum, uh, originally the rules did not talk about any other parks. So there, we've constructed some language to say that these rules shall apply to all municipal, municipal parks in Town Rangelay. And then it lists that Rangelay Town Park was a part of Hail's qualifier additionally. And then the rest of the text was primarily there, use the range of town parks is limited to, et cetera. Uh, it references the, the will, the furish will. So that, that has not changed. Those are probably the two most critical changes. Took out the word lifeguard replaced because we do not afford lifeguards anymore. Having for several years, we have pocket tenants.
And I like, the tennis courts are intended for tennis and pickleball use. And pickleball was added.
The Fire Commission had that.
That's good, that's good. Yes, May.
Um, just out of curiosity, do we know for sure what repercussions there are with, uh, with section one point oh six with the no solicitation for personal gain? Um, like what if you had a nonprofit have a, um, older affair or festival that would be given to them? I mean, do we know, like, what would be the repercussions of actually holding something in the town park? Who's behind the furish, like, what?
No, that's a valid question. I think he's got to answer.
We're on the board before we, the town, thirty town. There's no living.
Right.
No, no living, no, to the will, so the town is.
Right.
He drives in the will, so we.
We.
Police, the park and everything else. We would need, somebody just take it and set up shop.
Correct, and I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that we would want that. I'm just saying, like, how do we, you know, could it be possible in the future to hold, you know, a blueberry festival and then possibly have some vendors that, that give back to nonprofits of some sort or?
It's up to us to allow the different associates.
It does say nonprofits, right?
Right, but this, this whole no solicitation for personal gain is kind of score.
I agree with that, yeah.
Right, so I mean, that can be misinterpreted, interpreted in, in different ways. And I mean, it's such an amazing space and, and it's underutilized, I feel like.
Going back to the last third, and I cut you off, but we have the art, that's all for the fall. So I mean, it's up to the town, the town's a center jewels to the whole town as far as I'm concerned, it should be.
Since there seems to be some issues with the, um, the dogs, I see a lot of, you know, complaints about not being on leash, yada, yada, yada. Don't, you know, don't let them move to the water. What if, is it possible to create a, this would be probably more a dog park in the section there so that people could take their dogs off leash onto the right side of that, and I love that little slot of wing that really doesn't get used more than for some kite flying, you know? I've convinced a lot before that with apartment areas.
Where the kayak?
Yeah, there's like this little nice, nice lane of the grass that could be turned into a beautiful dog park. People would have, you know, this problem of getting in the way of that and pick up your litter.
Send stand dog park?
Lovely dog park for the area.
If the board would like for the Fire Commission to do that recommendation, I'd be happy to forward it to them.
Right, here a motion.
And find out the liability with our insurance without a.
Right there, a motion. Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I.
No, that's okay.
Just a couple editing.
Oh, no, sorry, this wasn't the draft, that was the motion moving, the dog park. I'm so sorry, I should have clarified that. No, we are not done with the draft yet. All those in favor of moving the suggestion of a dog park to a park mission? Yeah, for, no, I'm sorry, that was my bad, guys. I didn't identify which motion we were making. Now back to the draft. Yeah.
So not on the liability, but what's going to happen if not intended to have animal solicitation from the dog park, they're going to leave you, ban them, what are you going to do?
That would all be language with any of your rules and regulations that were put on the dog park. I mean, I think first we need to see if they even like the suggestion of it, Linda. They may not because of liabilities and and abuse of the space. They may kind of pull back away from that. If we can get some, uh, details on liability, liability and those types of things. They could then turn and look at rules and regulations for the dog park and could then discuss what would happen if you violate the rules and regulations of it. Would be my thought process on it.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of ideas, but in this day and age where everybody's so self-centered. I'm not sure how, or.
No, that's okay.
Dog parks and I, it's all, um, the town is not liable. It is up to the owners to, to settle their suits or but I get what you're saying as far as not, you know, not, not after your pet and that, that.
Joe, you had your hand up.
So section one point one four says pet owners are required to clean up after the dogs, cats, or other domestic animals and all other park areas. Saying all other park areas, but things are off leash, on leash. It's off leash, so it's covered now.
We started putting up those cute, um, stands of dog, big bags, whatever. They're not cute, sorry, those terms.
Okay, now, we have a motion and a second for the draft, at least the first reading, and then we can go into discussion on the first reading. Motion by Jim, second by Ethan, the first reading and discussion on the first reading.
Section one points one, like, for children, the town park should return all the time to the appropriate park. I spoke, I've spoken on this before, and I'm personally relieved that, um, the lights in the town park should one, the way the streetlights are on, um, it's a public area, it's a safety issue. Full of street runs down it, essentially streetlights, they're very useful lights that we put up in every other town building that we have, is illuminated all that way. Madam Chair, I believe the Fire Commission, uh, has voted to affirm that. And also, this was a recommendation from my office, so it was in there for administrations and futures, so there's no way it can be. Who determines when the lights are on? You know, it, it then becomes a Fire Commission, but it is now a Fire Commission, uh, determination.
And is it?
Subject, of course, you know, the, 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 the rules could change by virtue of the, so it's like, updated.
As well, I mean, bad coming up, the bathhouse, you know, a little bit.
They were on all the time when I was a kid, in front of the building, back of the building, the streetlight that's not there, that was over top of the basketball court, they were always on. And I know what I was doing when I was a teenager, I mean.
Anything else, Ethan?
Oh, I've got a suggestion perhaps, um, just to make this, um, not so dated under section one oh seven. Um, I'm sorry, one point zero seven, strike compact disc and tape and, and the slash and just have it read, no amplified music, loud radios or any loud music producing players. And, um, I would make the suggestion, or perhaps maybe the, um, board had thought about it, under the boat launch. Um, maybe add some language referencing clearing vehicles of aquatic debris when they're launching.
To coincide with boat practice.
Right, and then I just had a question here. It's, uh, just above section two zero three, that singular line. It says swimming alone is prohibited. I just, what if there's just a single person that's vacationing here and they want to go swimming? We're living here.
Was that inserted to try to deal with the fact that we don't hire lifeguards anymore?
It's kind of, it's in a very random spot. So I heard a suggestion to strike through, swimming alone is prohibited. A suggestion to, uh, omit the language of compact this tape and, and then flash forward slash.
Um, and I am so sorry, what section was the, it's under section one point zero eight, um, under the boat launch language. And I just, I mean, I know we have volunteers down there checking for boat debris, but I mean, you could put that, the language in there. Just so you don't have milfoil, you know, Eurasian milfoil or anything that contaminates the water.
You would like to see language added to. Can you reread that for Joe to put any suggested? Will you, Wendy, would you mind rereading what you'd like to see?
I just have really scratchy notes here. I said vehicles clear of aquatic debris. So when launching, you know, we suggest.
Perfect. Anything from this file for suggested improvement, like, improvement? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table with suggested language changes. Any further discussion, any questions? All those in favor, that is unanimous. That'll come back to us for a second reading, correct, Joe?
That is correct.
Thank you so much. Next up, Franklin County debt obligation. Joe.
Madam Chair, this is just information. It tells all of the municipalities in the county, uh, what their share of the the general obligation bond is. If you look on the second page, it's listed out by town. And this is for the Franklin County Communications Center, who knows dispatch center, and then last page, evaluation, state evaluation. Point two three, which is it's behind the lax, but it's an updated information. Six hundred and sixty-four million. It's just for your information, comes to us immediately, our audit results, use this information.
Town manager reports. Uh, department head updates will be provided at the next meeting, they're not at this one. Calendar. Can we try and schedule quarterly meetings? Do we have, can we offer a couple of dates maybe to Joe so he can, that works for us? Anybody have dates that absolutely don't work? And Joe, how quickly were we thinking?
Mid September, maybe, or mid October, that timeframe. Probably October, early October. It's good sports.
Uh, that's right, they're going to start sports again.
Maybe the end of September.
Maybe the end of September?
Works for me.
Week of twenty fifth in September somewhere. All right, other business. We didn't have anything else under the calendar, right? Our next meeting is the twenty first. Ethan, you indicated you would not be here for that one. Okay. Monthly financials have been provided via email. Vendor's license update.
Matt Chair, there were no notes on this, I just wanted to verbally update you. I know we talked at your last meeting, was your last meeting about some some things that happened with one of the food truck vendors in town. I followed up with, generally attended that evening, had a good conversation. I just want to kind of clarify for everybody that the town has issued a couple of licenses for that particular property, but it applies generally. When folks have a seasonal, a five month seasonal vendor license, they're essentially allowed to operate on any days of the conditional use permit that they have a license to operate on. I know the application that says a specific day, but the license does not have any restriction on it, the one we issued does not make any restrictions. I spoke about this with the town's attorney, I said, you know, does it make sense to go back and, you know, do an amendment and so forth? He was comfortable, I'm comfortable. Not having to do that, but license is clear, it's for these days, the five month period. That's a conditional use of a permit. And that's, that happens or applies to any property, it's not just a specific ones that came up recently. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So I'm so sorry, the conditional use of the vendor's license are two totally different subject matters. The conditional use was approved by the planning board, the vendor's license approved by us. We approved the vendor's license under a specific set of guidelines that we thought implied to it. My understanding was the planning board approved the conditional use under the same set of guidelines with the same date thought process in mind. So it is what I'm hearing is that the conditional use permit has language in it that allows for it to essentially override the vendor's permit?
Doesn't necessarily override it, but this, in this particular case, not, I won't talk particulars, but the conditional use permit does allow two food trucks on the property during business and during open. So the conditional use permit allows it, and the license does not restrict. So I just wanted to clarify that there's no restrictions in the license that the town issued.
And I'm going to make a suggestion that the vendor's license ordinance be reevaluated. Because if one process overrides the other and negates the other, that is not good practice. And it leaves ambiguous language out there to be interpreted by anybody who wants to interpret it. That needs to be framed up.
I, I agree that they shouldn't compete, you know, both documents, but I think that a mobile food truck, actually, the, the vendor's license is, is not the right license for that. It should be a standalone food truck license because by its nature, it's mobile. So it's not like the people that are setting up a table at an event or something like that. There's lots of really good, you know, I kind of looked up some across the country. There's very strict, you know, guidance for food trucks, and then there's, you know, very open. It, you know, so you can regulate it the way you want to. That might be something to explore, just so you don't have to, because the vendor's license, I think, makes sense for a lot of purposes, but maybe not a food truck.
Potentially, the food truck could be part of the vendor's license if it's more defined.
Yeah.
And set up as a separate application process.
There's, yeah, I mean, I have a lot of examples, I'm happy to share some with you, and I, you know, I went, I kind of got a spectrum of them. So you can see there, I mean, there's a lot of differences there, but that might solve the problem and keep the other document intact, if it's working for other types of applications.
Yeah, and my, my intent is not to, you know, not allow for them, my intent is to remove the ambiguous language which could land us in lawsuits.
I agree.
I want to avoid lawsuits at all costs. There's no need to have them, especially if this is something that can easily be fixed, but it needs to be fixed. And right now, it sounds to me like they compete with each other and they're not written very well. So if we could get that on an agenda, please? I'd appreciate it. Oh, Mark?
I was, vendor license.
Yeah.
I was confused about the donut one, the allied realty there, and this food truck one at the hideaway. And in trying to follow it without digging into it at all, just from the conversations that were taking place, it sounded like the hideaway had made some type of modification, got some type of modification to their conditional use permit to allow the food truck is that?
You have to, if you're an existing business, you have to get it, you have to get an amendment to your conditional use permit to allow for a vendor on the property, it's written in.
Okay, so is that done on the planning board?
I believe so, yes.
Oh, okay. Because with the donut one, I think it was Jimmy that made the motion. And you folks wrote it forth was to approve the vendor's license for allied realty for the donut thing, provided that they modified their conditional use permit. And, but it said with the code enforcement officer, and I wasn't sure if the code enforcement officer jurisdiction covers conditional use permits, strictly the domain of the planning board. So I ended up being confused over the whole thing. And they opened up anyway, like, the next day, so they didn't have time to modify anything. And so I was just kind of wondering how all that stood.
There are new provisions in the update of thirty eight that allow conditional use permits to be provided by the code enforcement officer in certain.
In certain areas and based them for certain things.
Speaking of the new chapter thirty eight. In years past.
Sorry, if we're going off topic, I just had somebody else with a question on the topic, or is this the same topic?
It was about getting a copy of chapter thirty eight, if that's a different topic, I'll bring it up later.
It is, I'm so sorry, Mark.
Stephanie Buringa over at the Rainsy Hideaway. I, I just wanted to clarify on that point, because of the discussion I had had with the code enforcement officer, that the process that we went through, through the planning commission or the planning board was not, it turned out it wasn't necessary. So he had found additional guidance within the code that clarified that as code enforcement officer, he's able to amend a conditional use permit. So we jumped through some more hoops than we had to, but happy to do it if it meant we were playing by the rules. So that's, that's where it came from, I don't know if that's helped for anybody. And, and then I just wanted to clarify with you, Madam Chairwoman, that it's that the license itself has absolutely no restriction on it. Like the operating license itself that the vendor receives from the town of Rainsy doesn't have, doesn't say days, times of operation and where.
Don't, but the application does, which is what we approved, which is in the application, so I understand.
When a legal officer, when a legal officer comes and says, produce your license to be here, this is, you don't, you don't give them an application. You give them the operating license, so that, so that, that piece, I think, is
Needs to be addressed.
So it's not so much like
Yeah.
that the conditional use permit overrides the license, it's that the license is so ambiguous that it.
Which is why it needs to be reviewed and addressed.
Exactly. I'd like to also just make the point that the code that's referred, that is actually published on the license that that this particular food truck received is, refers to a litter license and not even a food license. So the license itself is problematic.
Thank you so much for that view.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments? We're all in agreement that something needs to change.
Whatever that looks like.
All right, next, selectmen packets, FOAA. Joe, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna kind of throw out what I think has transacted since the last meeting.
Sure.
Through multiple conversations with folks in the general public, between board members, and wanting to adhere to some concerns of new board members, I heard do flat and clear. We've had some outside conversations, and we feel that the best approach to this forward is that anything that is within the board of selectmen packet, in our packets, that is not deemed confidential by state law is public information. So in the interest of making sure everyone has access to the public information, it will be posted on the website with the agenda, on either the Friday before or the Monday of. We will do the best we can to make sure it's out there before the meeting.
That makes perfect sense.
If everybody is comfortable with that.
Yeah, that's the way to do it.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure you knew we heard you.
Yeah, no, no. Cause I heard it again when we took our training.
Yeah. And, and if anybody knows anything about me, I am, I am rabid about making sure that the public is well aware of what's going on. I, I am. Because it was the platform I ran on. I saw some, some things occurring that I was like, wait a minute, when did that happen? How did that get by all of us? And it became a very big part of why I bring in. Is because it's just so important to me that we are open and honest with our public. They put us here because they trust us, we need to make sure we get the information too. And this seemed to me like the easiest way to have that done, without having folks have to submit the freedom of access request.
I agree, and that's refreshing.
They can get it online, they can print it themselves, done deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, saves town hall a lot of time.
Yes, yes. Any further comment from the board, Cindy?
Thank you, Ethan. Yeah, I was thrilled to see this online. It, there are, at least, for a quick, quick survey, I mean, there are at least fifteen other towns that, that do this regularly, they even do it for plenty more. And especially being a former board member and knowing that's what there's going to be continuing business, to not to have to follow and put the town off the staff through all of that procedural matter, it's great, so, so I'm, I'm thrilled, so thank you.
Thank you so much, any further comments?
Yes, so I have a question about this information that you want the town to have, which I think both the townspeople have is fabulous. But should there be even another outlet for the people who are not here full time?
There is, and that's the freedom of access request. Anyone can request any information at any given time. The, the freedom of access officer has five days to respond to you, to respond to the request. That does not necessarily mean five days to give you the documents requested, but five days to respond to that request, which is typically to let you know when they'll have the copies and everything ready for you.
So I think my question needs to be clarified a little bit. So in a closet, the only place you can get any information is the post office, and not everybody goes to the post office.
Right, what I'm saying is it's all going to be on our website now. You can have electronic access at any time, once it's posted to that.
Can we get a letter out to all the property owners stating this? Because I think a lot of people in both towns have given up on the select board in general, because when you went to the old website, you really had no clue what you guys were talking about on that space.
I think a fabulous way to communicate to other people, word of mouth, at the coffee shop, go to the OG and tell two people, and everybody will know. Go to Lakeside, tell two people, and everybody will know. And I don't, I'm not trying to slight the communication, but I think like mass mailing is cost prohibitive.
Well, our tax bill's coming up that way, so.
They do. They are causing, they can be cost prohibitive, the mass mailings can be. I find that word of mouth is better, so, but correct me if anybody thinks we should handle it a different way, I honestly believe making this statement, you know, that people are watching this video now and afterwards, so they'll get that information there. You can, you can put the information out there. It's up to the people to go again.
I do, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I do, I do agree with what you were saying, but also there was a lot of people that have completely lost faith in the select board, and I think one mailing to all the people who do not receive bills in this town, that receive them out of town, would satisfy anybody having any arguments with you. You can say, this has gone out, this is what you can do, and now it's up to that individual to keep up with this or not. And then the select board is not being always grounded upon.
No, thank you so much for that feedback.
If only we had a reporter that could put it in his article that we were doing this.
That would be interesting. Unfortunately, we don't have a reporter here this evening.
I thought Mark was a reporter. That's what he told us, the longest man to report. So there you go, put the word out.
I'm sorry, you are a reporter for a different outlet now, I apologize, I shouldn't have taken away the title completely. No longer for the, Stephanie, are you listening?
Yeah, just blocking the highlight.
Yes, I wonder if you could do a PSA through the radio station locally, and then maybe just get a notice posted at the OG and, you know, the post office and so forth. Just, I mean, without the expense of a mailing, at least, you know, the majority of people are in around town, you know, into summer, that might take the edge off a little bit.
Fabulous suggestions. I, I see you writing those down, Joe.
I still don't understand one of the tax bills.
Yes, thank you, your feedback has been heard, and I appreciate it. Anything else on the freedom of access? Perfect, select board communication. Wendy, did you have any select board communication?
I had none, no.
Ethan?
So I asked the tennis group if we were gonna do anything about, perhaps, the tennis courts.
Yes, we're going to.
I thought it might be, but it couldn't be, it's probably will be next spring.
Nothing for me?
I just had something over the town report.
Okay, I'm actually going back to that, because I just noticed that I didn't give you the opportunity to give us some updates that are under the continuing, I know it's not necessarily on the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll buzz through these. Transfer station variable frequency drive has been replaced. Haven't seen a good voice yet. I am communicating with our electrician and others about the best way to build a redundancy there, whether it's to get, we'll get BFD for on a shelf, which is probably a lower quality idea, a better quality idea, it's kind of risen in service lately, is to see if we can put it in tandem at the alternate, like you do in a water plant or sort of like. Real estate's an issue without a very real small place, and then the third option is we're thinking about updating the generator or moving the generator up there. Wow, this, it's single phase power coming in, the BFD trick stat, it's three phase power, so we gotta generate, generate a three phase power, just bypass it. So we're, we're taking the unfortunate month, month and a half of history there. Folks had to struggle through and trying to make ourselves stronger as a result, so the equipment has been replaced, that's the takeaway there. It voiced up in. That'll be able to request. Great status sheet, we should have a draft of that at least for the next meeting. In sequential order, Tracy had built this framework, but I not put all the dates in. So I'm also banking and investments, we plan to release the end of this month. And then bring it back with the date, late September. We already talked about, keeps townal housing, so Matt Tare, Matt Tare, I should say, has retained co-owning associates to develop a tip proposal for review, there's no commitment there from the town, that's something he's doing, this is all about. There is conflict with our tip attorney, she's a defense partner. That's true, so Freddie does have a tip attorney, so it's the point for review when he gets. Help us. Planning RFP, so I've spoken with all of the, the folks who submitted proposals, they all know. Set up, they'll have a full committee.
Thank you so much, did any of you have any questions on that? Thank you so much. Did anybody have any questions on that? Quick question. Cindy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So under the attainable housing appointment, is this, is this new news to the board that Matt Tier is requesting a TIF or drafting a TIF document? I just haven't seen it.
Yes.
Okay. Is this a credit enhancement agreement, Joe, or don't move?
Sorry, I'm gonna answer that. So at this point, it's not related to a credit enhancement agreement, and, and I did have a brief conversation with Joe about whether or not all of our TIF documents were in place. We did, in fact, adopt our TIF policy. We do not have an application yet. That is, that is in full. And we did have conversations about the credit enhancement, but we haven't finalized that either at this point, was my understanding. This is a proposal for an entirely separate TIF district.
That's what I thought, which we have to vote in town meetings, should the select board decide to advance it.
Madam Chair, this was such a disruptive proposal.
Yes.
The town's not obligated to.
Yep, yep, yeah. He is doing it. He's doing it, he's doing it on his own dime, on his own back. It's, it's something he would like to propose. We will need to review how that impacts our current TIF district, if it's worth it to separate the districts, or just to maybe look at if the funds that we already have can help towards the funding needs of this project.
I, I, Madam Chair, I would certainly hope that the current funds that are in the TIF account with first over town operations, so that they don't need to be raised through taxing. We've got huge expense coming up with the Aquasic Park. Um, and, you know, maybe some of that, but I'm just putting it out there. I mean, the TIF affected taxes four point six percent. So we need to really spend smartly.
Yeah, and we will spend within the guidelines of the adopted policy.
Exactly.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Cindy. Uh, we have, sorry, I did select word communication out of order. We have no executive session this evening, correct, Joe? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one question.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Okay, so apparently, these are questions about non-agenda items. So we'll roll back to non-agenda items. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This new chapter thirty-eight, I was looking through some of my big work, and I have a printed copy of the previous loan and audance, and they used to be available, say, at the front desk, town office. I guess, price that, seven dollars. You could also buy a compliance plan, you could buy a subdivision on it. I don't know who would make the decision to make the new chapter thirty-eight a printed copy available to the public to purchase, you know? You know, ten, fifteen dollars or whatever they'd be at today's prices, but in the past, it was pretty popular, you know, real estate offices, developers, just people would have them so that they could be sold and look at you know, for their customers and that kind of thing. So I think it would be a good idea to have it available again.
Um, I suspect that would fall under the Freedom of Access Request.
Madam Chair, these are available.
Yeah.
It's on the website.
Right, yeah, everything is on the website, but if you prefer a copy, it just submit a Freedom of Access request.
Okay, I saw that, Sean. Absolutely.
Anything else, Mark? Anything else, Mark? I know.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Would you tell me, Madam Chair? Um. The tennis courts. Is that also one of the Aquasic tennis courts or just Rangely?
So, good question, Madam Chair. The courts in Aquasic are past the point of general maintenance, but we're talking about Rangely needs some crack there, maybe a, a new seal or pull the top and stripe it. Aquasic is way beyond that. So that's, that's in the design phase now. We just got the first invoice for the design. Engineers are getting that ready to give it to us and put out the bid. So hopefully, in the next couple of months, this fall, we can get that out to bid. Although actual, from a projected construction cost, we could plan for that over the winter and have a funding mechanism in place and get it under construction next, next spring.
Is that gonna include the basketball courts as well?
Yes.
Yes, it is the Aquasic Park plan.
So phase one is the courts.
As being our next big expense, taxable expense.
Sorry, what was the question?
So that, the Aquasic Park project is what was referred to as being our next big expense.
It is a big expense.
Yeah, that would go through the policy process. It did come up at the last budget cycle. It was towards the end, and it was just not at a point where we had solid numbers, like I just referred to, to be able to say, okay, we're gonna ask the voters to raise appropriately this amount. We had to go through the design phase.
I can answer a couple of questions at the local office. Um, tennis courts are being addressed, basketball courts being addressed, and what else? Is that?
Drainage, so that's, that's the, the crux of the first phase of those majors.
Okay, what's the next phase?
I would have to refer to the plan. It has to do with parking. There are three or four of them, parking. More grading outside of the bar. I didn't even be on the website, but it's not. I put it out there for folks to see it.
Thank you. And then my last question aboard is, can I make copy of the short-term rental package that was mentioned?
Federal Land use planning commission report of it?
Yes.
It's on the website, Madam Chair, in the packet. I just hope that. So if you could, I could show you.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, folks. Hearing nothing further. I will entertain that motion for adjournment again. I see Jimmy. It is, I believe it is, but we're just gonna, for the sake of it, a second. Motion by Jerry, second by Ethan. All those are favored. Be unanimous. Thank you so much, folks.